The May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the College School District Boarding Directors is called order. Ms. Hart, would you be willing to lead us into the plan?
That's the reward.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the secretary please call a roll?
Director Hunchard?
Here.
Director Simsek?
Here.
Director Zlewski?
Here.
Director Vogliano?
Here.
Director Fuzkar?
Here.
Director Frank?
He's not able to be here this evening?
Director Apple?
Here.
Director O'Brien?
Here.
Director Schreiber?
Here.
There's a portion of our meeting at the very beginning where we invite public comment or ask questions about any agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience that we should ask a question about an agenda item? Seeing their questions will move on. We have some minutes from previous meetings. I'll just get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Go ahead and motion for that.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'll report that we had an executive session part of this meeting where we discussed personnel matters and real estate contracts. And I'll turn to Dr. Kreider for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have two administrative reports and then also superintendent's report that will follow. We'll start with the elementary report. We have Mrs. Burleson and Mrs. Bachman who are here this evening. They're both our elementary school principals at Crafton and Carnegie. Last update I believe they provided was back in November and they're back with some more exciting information of what's going on at our elementary school. So I'll turn it over to our MVP.
I would like to say. Yes, it's been a while since we came. I want to first thank everybody for letting us speak and sharing such as the great things that are happening in school elementary schools. I get to see some of you individually, but some I don't get to see, so I'm so happy to take this time. Thank you for inviting me. In the beginning of the year, we kind of went over things that we did as a whole, kind of universally. And now I just wanted to update you on some things that have happened since we talked last. The things that we did speak about, still going, still going very strong. If we flip to the next slide, we still focus on school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports. We're guided in this process through the AIU. We do have three school-wide rules, which is be respectful, be responsible, and be ready. We did receive the participant award two years ago. Because of COVID, we weren't able to continue. They didn't do any of the things that we would be eligible for last year because they would have to have made like visits to the school. But this year, like this day, we are continuing. And they actually came to our school yesterday. They have to do like, not interviews, but they have to pick random people and ask questions. Like, what are your three Bs? And they asked this to kindergarten, to staff members. It's a little nervous. We walked through the hallway. There was a brand-new student just came from Jamaica. And of course, like, I'm gonna ask him walking down the hall, like, he just moved here. And she was like, I'm gonna try anyways. And he did it. So I was so happy. Teachers do a great job making sure that's, you know, implemented in the classroom. So this year, we're applying for recognition of Tier One sustaining. And we will get an awesome banner if, I know when, you know, we pass all that criteria. So look forward to that at the next meeting, I'm sure. The next slide, I'm just gonna continue with good news, some grants and awards. That is actually what's new throughout the year since I've talked to you last. We have the Rotary, the Pittsburgh Foundation. And you sent way me very well. It's MVP. We got a, because of that, we get a thousand-dollar grant as well. So specifically grants, they crafted in a Rotary grant. We did get twenty-five Chromebooks. That, I know we are one-to-one, so we've decided to be very creative with these ones. And they are stationed in different parts of the hallways. And they're still extra that if one is broken or something, like students can use it. But it's pretty neat. They're using them. We have an intervention enrichment time where there are groups and some of the groups do go in the hall. So instead of trying to have kindergarten or first grade students move around with these Chromebooks, they're already stationed in spots. So they go out and work on different things like in Menthol, reflux, Lexi, which are all personalized technology. And then they're also stationed out there for movement breaks. So a lot of you saw our sensory path. It's in the hallway where we added Chromebooks that are just on like Go Noodle or something like that. So when students can go out by themselves and do a dance break if they need to, which is helpful for our little primary kids. And then they also give us bonds for our sixth graders. Our sixth grade promotion will be June eighth. You're all invited. And the Rotary gives the bonds to students who are most improved, highest GPA, different things like that. They're also invited to a picnic at the park in the summertime. The next one is the Pittsburgh Foundation, which is through Reverend Bowen. So some of you who have been here a while know who Reverend Bowen was. He was an important part of the community in Crafton, who did donate money to Crafton Elementary. But with his passing, he put that money into the Pittsburgh Foundation, which gives us a grant every year. In the past, I put just things in the past before we were one-to-one and everything. He's bought Chromebooks, iPads, sensory furniture, parts of the playground were donated from Reverend Bowen. Our outside electronic sign is part of that money that we received. Present, we didn't do much with it last year because of COVID. But this year, we are planning to buy more sensory furniture, meaning like standing desks, wobble stools, therabands at the bottom of chairs, things that students, every student can use. And then more anti-bullying or motivational speakers. Every year, we have Josh and Gacho come. But we thought, let's bring some new people. So actually, next week, Alex Simon will be coming to do a motivational assembly for Crafton Elementary. And he is, if you just Google his name, he's a very, I don't know, well-liked, kind of famous person that's been on the Today Show. He's been on Stomp. I think the students are gonna love him. It was a fun story when I called and he's like, I like to perform in the gym. I play drums and everything. And I was like, yeah, no, not our gym. Like, we don't have bleachers. We're like a hundred years old. It's very small. He's like, Marcia, Marcia, Marcia. I commit, I'm like, but we have a very classy auditorium. So I convinced him it's gonna be great. And then other some school-wide activities we're talking about implementing as next year comes. So we're excited for that. And then MVP award grant, I received a thousand dollars to be donated to some sort of project at our school. We have a mindfulness room that students use on the third floor. It's just a, it's a smaller room that has like pictures of different mindfulness body movements. Or it has squishy balls or beanbag chairs. Actually, it has big teddy bears for students, like a couple kindergartners needed that kind of room. It still looks a little undyed, so we're gonna do some rugs, some building blocks that are spongy. And then some, I have a standing desk. And then just incentives, we do crafts and things for PAUS two hundred. So just to the whole school, we're gonna spend that money. Sounds like a lot, but it's really a lot of money, so we're excited for that. Next year, I did include a slide in the last one about mental health in Crafton. Next year, it is going to change a little bit, so I did want to share that Wesley base, Wesley School Base will be coming to school three days a week opposed to one and a half. That is a person that has clients already set up through permission forms. They see them usually once a week, twice a week. They don't really, aren't involved in like crisis situation for students that aren't on their client list already. Then, no Wesley outpatient, that is going away this year, so that's gonna be different. My psychologist will be half-time shared with Carnegie. I think most of her time is going to be looking at evaluations and things, so we won't see her as often. Our counselor, we won't share with Carnegie, so we'll have a full-time counselor. To remember, she still will be teaching, so it'll be times when she's not available for different situations. And then we still have our sensory notes and our SAT came through the HSA though. And then some of the cool things we did this year, I think after we talked. We still did food drives. We collect for the food pantry, the local food pantry in Crafton. We did Project Linus, which we kind of partnered up with the Rotary. They provided the blankets and the sixth graders made, or the fabric, they made the blankets. Crafton is a tree city, so Mrs. Luxbacher came to visit during, or they brought trees for all of our first graders. And local beekeeper comes and presents to our first and second grade. And then the fishing a boat commissioner presented to the second graders. So lots of cool things happening. And we're trying to bring in the community, mostly with Crafton, like in the local community. And then just upcoming events. We have no school coming up. It's exciting. I think it's all well-deserved. Break. Kennywood picnic and red carpet ready day. The kids get to dress up fancy. We, I'm just excited to bring back the traditions we lost over COVID. Like, I mean, I know we had Kennywood, but it wasn't quite the same. We're having Fun Day, which is super exciting to bring that tradition back. Traditional sixth-grade promotions coming back. And then that last day of school. And I am going to hand it over to Ms. Bachman and what questions at the end.
Thank you. Okay, so this first slide is really just, you know, encompassing what we have put together as our philosophy for this. For this school year, creating that positive learning environment. So every time we say, you know, you can't stop the waves, but you can learn to surf. So that whole idea of mindfulness and bringing that across all venues of our, of our school district is something that we've embraced this year. This next slide is actually a slide that I did have in my first presentation that we had back in November. But I really felt like it was important just to, again, you know, articulate all the partnerships that we have brought into the, into the, into the building this year. We, Carnegie Color Rotary is something that we've had in years past and we were able to have them, you know, come back in with Early Ed Club, with Mrs. Campbell sponsoring that. Educational partnership, we did there. They again adopted a school. They came and gave all of our teachers their school supplies, as well as in the spring, we did our student school supply. Literacy Pittsburgh and Hello Neighbor with the tutoring. And then, of course, you know, Awaken Pittsburgh with our professional development grant. So I just felt like that was really important to, you know, show again how important our partnerships are, getting back, you know, post-COVID, so. The next one I have here are some pictures of our free store. We have adopted Free Store one-five-one-of-six. This is another partnership with Giselle Featherman, our second lady of Pennsylvania. She was here to help us dedicate the store. It's an amazing space and I welcome all of you to come and visit it. It's, it's amazing what a group of teachers and support staff can do when we clean out a closet, buy some organizational things and get the community involved. So as you can see, we have, you know, our non-perishable food items. We have clothing here. This is our logo that was completed by a young lady, Mrs. Kladek, as a second-grade class. And we are now housing or supporting twenty families with food on a rotating basis throughout the week. So I have about a staff of about ten teachers and support staff that volunteer their time at Carnegie to rotate through collecting food for the week for families and they take them home on a rotating basis. So Monday through Friday, we have small groups of students that take home food each week in addition to, you know, what we offer with regards to, you know, the take-home breakfasts. So it's pretty amazing. I get to see, I couldn't, we could not have done this without the blood, sweat, and tears of Mr. Alexander, one of our second-grade teachers, and the support of his two colleagues, Mrs. Campbell and Mrs. Kladek. They're all pictured there. Our second-grade team has really embraced this, this model. And we have Dr. Sertie to thank, our reading specialists, Mrs. Zimmerman and Miss Ripple. It's all just a collective, a collective effort and I really couldn't be more proud of them. Mr. Alexander and I are now talking about what we're going to do with regards to the summer and how he's going to volunteer his time to have families come in in the summer on a rotating basis. So we continue that throughout the summer, all on his own volunteer time. In addition to that, we have clothing. So if we have students that have them, that have issues with shoes or clothing, siblings, we've now gotten to the point where we have donations for adult clothing. So we're now talking about how we can open the store to some of our families within the Carnegie community. So it is an absolutely amazing space and I welcome anybody to come see it. We can give you a tour. It's wonderful. Dr. Kreider has, has been there a few times. Mr. Hunchard was here at our last PTA meeting. I was able to, had the pleasure of giving him a tour as well. It's a pretty awesome space for a pretty limited area that we have. So I'm excited about that. The next activity we have coming up is our Positive Painting Project. You'll see throughout my presentation, the theme of the second-grade team, who really embraced the idea of community partnerships, community mindfulness, and really, really getting to know different cultures and getting to really have our students have a really well-rounded second-grade experience. So the Positive Painting Project is something that is going to happen on May nineteenth. We will be doing Positive Painting. And then after that, the creations that are created will be put up throughout the school district in Carleton Junior Senior High School, the elementary school, and then throughout Carnegie. So you'll be able to see all of those paintings popped up throughout the summer. So we're excited about that. And as I said, it's a little bit of a theme with my second-grade team. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mrs. Mary Campbell. She is one of our second-grade teachers who was nominated and recognized for her work with our community and immigrant population. When I was talking to Mary about this and getting the pictures, she was really nominated with some heavy hitters. The person who actually won this award is the person that founded Hello Neighbor, which is an organization that she brought into the building. So I am really super proud for this nomination and I, I think that she does just amazing things. So I wanted to make sure that she was recognized for all the work that she does in, for, for our Carnegie families. And then, of course, our Allegheny Health Network Cho Project, our May update. The first thing again tells you just a little bit about what the background is of the Cho Project. That's based, that's safe space that's designed to help manage stress, relax for not only students, but also our, our professionals, our paraprofessionals, everyone within our Carnegie family is more than welcome to come to, to visit the room. Ms. Loman, our children therapist, also does her mindfulness groups through our PAUS class. So three times, three days throughout the, each month, she's going in, she's doing a mindfulness lesson, teaching students coping strategies, things like that. And then that lesson that she does with our students is mirrored at one of our faculty meetings so that our teachers and staff know exactly verbiage, strategies, so that it's seamless throughout the day. And that teachers can also use those coping strategies within their classroom. And then the May update as of May tenth, we have just our, our numbers. You can see that we have almost six thousand students dropping in, two hundred and twenty-three teachers and student consultations. Ms. Loman has participated in two hundred and forty-one parent meetings and consultations. And she has done eight children faculty workshops with seventy-six attendees. So we have all of that data that we continue to, you know, look at and evaluate to ensure that, that our Cho Project is still moving in a positive direction. And then we're making any changes or any updates that we feel will be best suited for the students and, and the building. So then my last slide, good for questions, would be again, no school. Yay, yay, elementary kids love that long break. Kennywood picnic, our field day is June third. We have our sixth-grade picnic and celebration on June eighth. And then, of course, our last day of school is June ninth. It went quick, super quick. Any questions for either one of us? Anything that you'd like us to clarify or answer?
I have a couple of things if you don't want. The Free Store one-five-one-of-six is, sounds awesome. I'd love to come see it. When is it, when is a reasonable time, like not just popping in the middle of the day? Is there a good time?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that I could give you a tour any day, any time, except for the time between ten forty-five and twelve forty-five because I have a lunchroom. But yeah, we can definitely sneak, sneak by the music room. You'll get to hear the music class and we'll be able to see the room. It's wonderful.
Awesome, cool. Or maybe we even have, like, we talked about having a board tour of the building.
Yeah, I was just, I was thinking if we had a board meeting.
Maybe we could coordinate that this spring or summer and that could.
Absolutely. We can set that up to, yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Are the board members so interested in touring all facilities? Okay, so that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, it is such an amazing space. You cannot help but smile. There are times where I find where I'm not having the greatest of days and I do just like walk in and just look around. Because it's just amazing to see how teachers have embraced it, how we've come together as such a great school community, and students. I mean, there are students that have, their demeanor has changed because they feel so loved. It's just so amazing. Yeah, it's great.
Don't say too much, Crafton, we jumped.
No, it's not. We have an MVP. We're a great team. Allegheny's a great team and I, I couldn't be happier working with the students, so.
One more quick question.
Sure.
Children, I remember the Zoom meeting very early in the pandemic where we talked about the children, the implementation. I think if I remember correctly, you had stated that it, and I might be overstating it, but it almost transformed your building in the sense that you saw a huge impact in your student population and then in the severity of some of the children's negative reactions to a situation. That seemed to drop. Is that an accurate reflection? Is that still happening or was there?
No, I would say that that's absolutely an accurate reflection.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's definitely a space that they value. And of course, anybody who starts a children, you think to yourself, how is this not going to get destroyed if somebody's in a crisis? It just doesn't happen. The value that they have and the ownership that they have taken in the room is just, is just amazing. This is their safe place and they don't want anybody missing with it. So it's really, it has transformed. There are definitely students that have made some, some great progress. I'm thinking of two in my heads right, head right now that you are very happy with the results of, of the projects.
Awesome, cool. Anybody else? Last question, I promise.
Sure.
Marcia, I think you mentioned food or one of you mentioned food. Is it having a summer food program or is it a little bit earlier to know if that's gonna happen yet?
Dr. Manchin, we need to reach out to Mr. Kavistic to see what we can do to merge our two programs together. And I know that's something he was interested in talking about further. But this year is a little bit different from the last two years when the federal government did support the funding of the food. This summer's slightly different, but we're gonna see what we can do with it.
Yeah, I do feel like he's still working on that.
Because I imagine there's, the need has probably evolved or shifted. But I imagine, what I think of seeing from the news is that there's still a need, just a different kind of need. Actually, Susie, I wonder if you have, you sent us insights into that, or Chris, both of you?
Well, I mean, if, if, you know, people can't pay for gas, or if you have to choose between gas and food.
Right.
Yeah, I guarantee you there's a need.
So it sounds like there's still support internally of us trying to do as much as we can to help. Thank you both.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Castle.
Thank you both.
All right, next report we have from Human Resources Coordinator, Ms. Butler, who joined the district last January and has done a remarkable job in just improving the flow of work that takes place out of human resources and has helped modify all that work and streamline it, did a lot of work with their business office as well. She's here this evening just to give us an update on human resources and stats where they are with our district.
Yeah, so I'm Kristen. I am just gonna give kind of an overview of all of our staff, what our different bargaining units look like, what kind of happened this year, what we're looking at for next year, and then some different things coming up in the HR office. So we have a hundred and ninety-five employees. There's a group of them there, but not everybody. For professional employees, we have a hundred and fourteen as of now. I broke it down to kind of show their different educational levels and degrees. So we have ten bachelors, thirty-two with bachelors plus twenty credits. We have fifty-four with master's degrees, fourteen with master's plus twenty credits, and then three people with master's plus forty and one with a doctorate. So over half of our professional staff have master's degrees or higher. For our secretarial cafeteria aides employees, we currently have ten secretaries. That covers our Class One and Class Two. We have twenty-two paraprofessional aides, fourteen general food workers, and six lunchroom playground aides. For custodial maintenance employees, we currently have eleven custodians and four maintenance.
Is that fully staffed or we can't go?
We have some openings. We're gonna touch base on those in a little bit. Then lastly, we have the Act Ninety-three employees and confidential. So we have four building level, which would be our principals, or five district level, and then three confidential employees. Moving toward bargaining unit agreements, I kind of put the dates that those run. We don't have any expiring until at least two thousand and twenty-four. So we'll probably start looking at those in two thousand and twenty-three at some point. First off would be our secretarial cafeteria aides and then our custodial maintenance as well. Next, kind of an overview of this school year, so twenty-one, twenty-two. This is the entire year. So throughout the year, we had three professional employees retire, two secretary cafeteria aides, one confidential secretary, and then one Act Ninety-three employee. Throughout the year, we also had a few resignations. We had two professional staff resign and then five secretary cafeteria aide employees resigned. Next is we are still contracted to fill our substitute positions through Substitute Teacher Service. That contract is running through June of two thousand and twenty-three. So everything goes through online. They fill all of our substitute vacancies for us. I kind of included the monthly fill rate that we have for this school year with an average of forty-nine percent. I'm sure a lot of you know there's a huge shortage of substitute teachers right now and we get a lot of positions filled daily. This percentage might not look great, but it is actually pretty high compared to other districts.
And what happened to the members of the community?
I don't know if that was the holidays or the weather. Everyone got their Christmas money instead of. I do also feel like we might have lost a couple and gained a couple subs at that, during January. Next is kind of looking at next school year, so moving on to twenty-two, twenty-three. We do have some realignments. We touched base on a few last week. And if you're kind of finishing up on this week's agenda, first off, we eliminated a first-grade teacher at Crafton, created a kindergarten position.
Realigned second grade?
No, we eliminated first grade and created a second grade.
We eliminated first grade. So that was just due to that class moving forward and the different enrollment numbers and keeping the need for the number of students. We eliminated a deposition that was the counselor that was split between Crafton and Carnegie. I know they touched base on that a little bit. And created two. So there will be a full-time school counselor at Crafton and Carnegie in the fall for the new school year. Like they said, they will still be pushing in and doing classes, but they'll be in the building full-time. We eliminated our two school psychologist positions to kind of realign that department as well. We created one elementary school psychologist, so she'll be splitting time between each of the elementary schools. And then we created one district psychologist Act Ninety-three position. She's gonna oversee more of the seven through twelve and then do a lot of more of the evaluations. Then lastly, we eliminated the K through three special ed at Carnegie. This was due to the needs of our students and the need for emotional support in that building. So we created a K through two special ed position. And then we created a K through six emotional support with grade three learning support, all in that one position.
So from a net perspective, we either went lateral laterally or we increased the number of positions?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, that's where we, actually, we increased two positions total.
So the open positions for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, some of these are ongoing that we have available right now. And then the teaching positions are ones that are opening up for the fall. So at the junior senior high school, we're gonna have two special ed teachers that we will be hiring. One instructional aide and then some general food workers. Carnegie Elementary, we will be hiring the, for the K through six emotional support, grade three learning support position that we just touched base on in the last slide. A personal care aide, lunchroom playground aides, and general food workers. And then at Crafton Elementary, we are looking for a nurse assistant and a general food worker.
So all of these are posted right now?
Yes.
And, or where are they posted?
So we are going through Indeed. They're all on our district website. Our teaching positions are on PA Educator. That's only for certified teachers. And then, yeah, all the other ones are on Indeed.
We getting good response?
Not a lot, no. It's tough right now. We get some, a few applicants straggling, but some of them don't move forward, some of them.
Have you ever looked at snaggy jobs or do you use snaggy jobs at all?
For hourly positions?
I've done that one before.
That's more for hourly, yeah.
Take a look at it.
What's it called, snaggy?
Snaggy jobs.
Snaggy jobs.
Snaggy jobs.
And then, so filling those open positions, I've been working really closely with Renee Flankar, our payroll department at the business office, to kind of fill the procedures to go on hiring and onboarding. The two of us kind of tackle all of the onboarding. So we're looking to just make the procedures a little bit more smooth and transition people in a lot easier. And then coming soon, going along with the last slide, we are going to be using Job Rudder applicant tracking and onboarding system. So a lot of it will be done online and then flow right into all of our systems, and everyone's information will be in one spot. We are creating district paraprofessional and secretarial qualification exams. That will help us get a few more paraprofessional substitutes to be able to push into vacancies as well as just filling the positions that we have available. And then same for secretaries. We do have the need for a lot of substitute secretaries, we're finding out. So we're looking for an exam that we can get people ready to be able to substitute for our secretary positions. And then coming in the fall, we'll probably have a district website page for HR and payroll. It'll just make it a little bit easier for access to different resources that we'll put up and have available to employees. Are we having questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm wondering if we have demographics on district employees, particularly thinking about the success of students of color related to when they have teachers of color in the classroom, and if we are monitoring, you know, our hiring and making sure that we have diversity as one of our goals?
We do have that. I don't have it available with me, but I can get that over to you. As for the success rate in the classrooms, I'm not sure if we have that available. I'm sure we can find out.
There's tons of best practice research that just demonstrates that if a black student has a black teacher, then they have better outcomes when it comes to test results and making sure that they stay in the classroom and behavioral issues and those sorts of things. So just wanting to layer on another factor as we're thinking about providing the best quality education that we can.
I would definitely look into that.
A quick question. Thank you also for your presentation. The list of job openings that you have for next year, I think Chris has a good question about your perception of the increase coming in. Do you anticipate any one of those areas being a problem, or which of those, if any, are you anticipating having a difficult time filling?
I think the toughest one right now, we have a lot of food worker positions available, and we've recently just lost a few. So right now, I feel like that is the toughest one to fill.
And we currently pay those food workers through the cafeteria fund. Is that correct? Do we know? Keith, is that, would we pay our food workers through the cafeteria fund?
No, we pay them through the general fund.
Through the general fund, okay.
Cafeteria funds.
Cafeteria funds for equipment.
On those entry level, I assume, yeah.
Yeah, and I think they're so hard to fill just because of the bulk of numbers that we have. And that's what Mrs. Bachmann had mentioned, you know, she works from, you know, 6:30 to 4 o'clock, but she's not available between 10 and 2 because she's in a lunchroom company.
Those five positions have been vacant all year.
That's why, because that snaggy job is geared toward hourly positions and entry level, so.
So into that one. Yeah, the lunchroom playground aides, I think, is our toughest at Carnegie, so it's a little more specific to each building.
Do you have a sense if it is a hourly rate issue or a number of hours that they get? Like, is it too small of a window? It's not worth their time, or is it just pure availability of people willing to do work?
Yeah, what do they come out to a week? Like, how many hours a week are they?
They work four, four and a half a day.
So it's like a half. It's like a halftime position. Is that, like, do we have that on our website? Are we pushing it out to like highlighting it?
Big arrows pointing to it.
I know, and I talk to people. I mean, it's two and a half hours a day, so it's in the middle.
Yeah, right.
They get like $13.75 an hour. So unless they're like a mom that just wants to check out how the, you know, the school runs, or like hang out in the school for a little bit.
It's just not enough.
It's not enough money, they say, and enough time to make that commitment.
Yeah, I know our lunchroom playground aides, a lot of them are parents.
Yes.
At Crafton, like every.
Almost all of them.
Have you posted the jobs or shared the jobs with Literacy Pittsburgh?
Yes, so I was just, Literacy, that is our goal at the end of this, to see what, if there are any family, any of our, you know, ESL families have gotten to the point now where, you know, they can fill those positions. So I have, that is a goal that I have with Literacy Pittsburgh. I don't know if we're there quite yet, maybe for the fall. We're hoping.
Yeah, good.
What we add to all of the questions that you're having, I think is excitement from the board that we have a human resources professional that's organizing, so thank you for that.
Still growing in the position, but yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't been here since I was hired, so. Any other questions?
I think the other one on that list is the nurse assistant is also related to wage as well.
They require an LPN or RMT license, so it's tough because of the wage nurses are making a lot these days.
Yeah, so I guess that's a challenge one also. Special education teachers, we'll see what that field looks like. We do have that posted on PA Educator at the present time. But I know there's a lot of schools out there that are currently looking for special education teachers. And we were able to fill our position last year, but it did, it took some work. So this year, having three, it'll take some work to get those filled. Just thinking out loud, since both of the elementary principals noted that they had trouble staffing those positions, either the food workers or the lunchroom playground aides, if it's such a limited amount of time during the week, and if the pay is currently relatively nominal, maybe there's a strategy we look at. If we're in July and you're still seeing low numbers, maybe look to make a change in compensation just to see if that helps us getting people. Because I think my gut is that those people, they're not teachers, they're not principals, but they're really key to making the building run really well. And if we don't have enough of them, that really hurts our operation, our overall operations. Having a good number of staff is really important for your buildings.
It's a huge issue for the building principals when their time is not allocated towards their areas of responsibility, when they're working as cafeteria aides.
Or nurses.
Every day. You know, in it.
Can I take some from the aides and the teachers? Because when we don't have enough, the instructional aides are filling in, sometimes teachers are filling in. So they are overwhelmed and taking away from their kind of students with instruction.
I mean, I have to have teachers. It's on a, like, it's considered an emergency basis, so.
But we get through, so I'm not putting wood, you know.
I think this is stuff every school is struggling with.
Yes, I would agree.
But if we're seeing it four months in advance, maybe we can try some things differently, and the numbers aren't that big, maybe we can look at compensation levels or try creative approaches.
Are we fully staffed for custodians?
Yes, we are currently.
Yeah, I know we had an opening. That's good. I'm just, you know, I'm just like thinking, it's a question of hours, and I know they're two different bargaining units, but if you could have some kind of a hybrid sort of situation where, you know, you could offer somebody the lunchroom food, whatever, general food worker, playground aid position, and then the rest of the day they could work as a custodian, maybe would be a way to get them some hours. I think the custodians, you know, pay with the custodian rate because that's higher than, I don't know.
So it's a matter, like, morally, I know where I work, we have certain people that have certain jobs, but if they do field service, they get a premium for that. So maybe if you do this extra service, you know, maybe we could create some infrastructure.
They create.
Yeah.
Could you see any way for the general food workers for something to be automated so that you, principals and teachers wouldn't have to?
Like a Rube Goldberg device?
Or just raise their, raise their pay. But do you see anything that could be automated? Probably not.
I know with the lunchroom workers, I mean, that's sometimes a lot of just behavior management, and then the food workers are passing out the food or, yeah, kind of thing.
Or force the kids to eat at the end of the day.
Your vegetable.
Do that.
They're all snack runs.
Yeah, do that. It's so tough getting somebody in the middle of it.
I don't know. It's true.
There is a senior center within two blocks of Carnegie Elementary, so that can help you. But I'll check down there to see if anybody would, you know, grandfatherly types and grandmotherly types. This would be a little extra money. I'll check. Maybe we could have.
That's social interaction.
They drive.
Yeah, I think there's some that have passed on the opportunity because it is, it's the middle of the day, and it's every day. If we could creatively also think where it could be a part-time job, where you work at Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, or you want to do Tuesdays and Thursdays, or anything of that nature where it could be, it's part-time, part-time. And in talking to some of the parents, they said that some would be willing to do some volunteer work, and they would actually take their wage and donate it to the foundation or things like that. But that's the part where they don't necessarily want to come in every single day. So maybe if we think creatively too, where it's a part-time, part-time job.
We can post duplicate positions, have a full-time position and a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, to see if there's any different application.
Build your own schedule.
Yeah. As long as it's between, at least our nest hour these days.
Cool, good stuff. Any other questions for HR?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick for, I know that we covered some dates here for elementary and some upcoming events. Some upcoming events at the junior senior high school, we have commencement that will take place Friday, June 10th. It'll be 7 o'clock at St. Hones' Viper Field. We have 91 seniors in the senior class. Most will be walking, some still have some graduation requirements that they need to tend to. Senior award night, working backwards from there, Wednesday, June 1st at 7 o'clock. It's here in the high school auditorium. Dinner for the seniors is at 5:30. That's a great evening for a celebration of student accomplishments. Also mentioned in the elementary was the Kennywood Day. That's Thursday, May 26th. Tickets are $30, give or take a penny. They're actually $29.99. Most people have been generously donating their one penny extra. Mr. Bealby has been able to balance the budget based on that. That's the reason for the no tax increase, so. Looking at that extra penny donation's been extremely helpful. But also $5 for the bus tickets and the buses we've routed through the community to help give rides out to Kennywood as well. Senior prom, Wednesday, the 25th, tickets are $75. This year, the kids are going down to the Lamont for their dinner in celebration for a senior prom. And as they leave the venue that night, they'll also be taking the incline down onto Carson Street to pick up the bus. So that'd be a nice way to end the event. Student council sponsoring Spring Fling for 7th through 9th grade. That's Saturday, this Saturday, May 21st. That's from 7 o'clock to, I think it starts at 7 o'clock, but that's dancing, food, prizes, photo booth, those types of things for students in grades 7 through 9. Across the district, at the elementary and secondary level, we just finished up with the PSSAs. So building principals and counselors have been very busy with boxing up and giving exams out. Our schedules are extremely tight. The work that they do in designing their schedules and making the test accessible, providing small group testing to our students, and making sure we create that environment where students can perform and do well. They've put a lot of work into that. And then also moving forward with our Keystone exams, we're finishing up here at the junior senior high school. And all those reports then, Dr. Manich organizes that with the state, make sure that everything gets sent off to the state and is in good shape. We will have our summer programming taking place this summer again. Those sessions will run. We've aligned the elementary and the secondary with the same dates, June 22 through July 8. Will be K through 3 at the elementary, and then also session one at the junior senior high school for makeup coursework in English, math, science, social studies. Second session runs from July 14 to July 29. And that's also the same session that our fourth through sixth graders run. At the high school level, they're running at 7:45 to 11:45 in the morning. At the elementary level, it's 8:30 to 11:00. And then we also have afternoon programming taking place again this school year, where we partnered with, again, with Art Expressions. So they have art ventures coming up as an afternoon program, Echo Smart, Lego. And then up here at the junior senior high, again, we're doing the performing arts studio through Pittsburgh Cultural Trust. So a lot of that information's gonna be forthcoming. We're trying to push that information out as soon as we can. At the elementary level, we look at it as based on student performance throughout the course of the school year for the morning programs. So it's student by invitation from our building principals and from counseling staff. At the high school level, it's more the student invited themselves based on their performance during the school year. So we look forward with transportation, same types of things that we did last year. So that's a lot of the upcoming events that we have. Also, just to revisit the state of COVID where we are at the present time, the community level in Allegheny County was recently elevated, and that was upgraded to medium by the CDC. Cases within the school district over the past few weeks have grown slightly. We're up to five cases district-wide, three from students, two from staff. But they're not growing at an alarming rate that we recognized back in January, February, types of race, or types of parts with the Omega surge. We continue to work closely with our families. So if students are identified as positive, we work very closely with them, follow the guidance from Allegheny County Health Department in regard to the amount of time that individuals need quarantine, and then that transition back into the schoolhouse with wearing a mask for certain periods of time. So we continue to follow all other aspects of the health and safety plan with cleaning, sanitizing, separation of students. But we have noticed more group work that was permitted in the last health and safety plan. Our students are participating more in group work. It's more collaborative. It is steps moving back towards a more traditional type of instruction, which is nice. When we approved the last version of the health and safety plan back on March 8th, one component of that indicated that the board would revisit the health and safety plan to see if any further recommendations would be warranted based on moving from low to either moderate or high. So since we are at the moderate level, following our health and safety plan, it is something that I would recommend to the board that if you have an interest in revisiting our health and safety plan, that towards the end of the meeting, either in new business, just to bring that up at that time. From my perspective, I see no reason to make any changes to our current health and safety plan with the way that we're running and organizing things. We're two, three weeks out from the end of the school year. Things are running smoothly in regard to infection cases here in the schoolhouse, and I think we're overall taking a very unified approach to it and handling it pretty well. So if you believe it's warranted, I'd recommend that you bring it up in new business. And that is the status of superintendent report.
Any questions for Dr. Krater? If not, let's move over to committee reports. Director Apple, what do you think you want to share about Parkway West?
Yeah, so we had a meeting first Tuesday of the month. Just real briefly, I'd like to recognize three of our students who are in the cybersecurity and network technology program out there, excuse me, have been inducted in the National Technical School or Technical Honor Society, and that's Simon Blaine, and then Mahavishnu and Vishnupriya Duda, three chronology students. And that's a pretty fine achievement for them and worth recognizing. The only other thing I'd say is that on the 18th will be the graduation ceremony for Parkway West, and that's gonna be held at Montour High School.
Good stuff.
Joe, how do they decide where to have their graduations? Do they move them around at a different school, their ceremonies?
Yeah, so Montour, Auburn. Yeah, I know in the past I've attended, I think we were at West Allegheny when. Yeah, I know in the past I've attended, I think we were at West Allegheny one year. I'm trying to remember. South Bay, maybe? Yeah. So.
Good stuff. Director Honschar, any updates on Pathfinder?
Sure, thank you, Jim. Graduation will be Wednesday, June 8th at 10:00 a.m. Last year there were two sessions because we were still in COVID. This time it's a huge class because we have some repeating senior year, but it's just going to be one seating this time. The garden has already been planted by the teachers and the kids and the kids will be coming back in the summer to harvest. We're going to increase our rental charges. Actually, I have to talk with Keith about this. And this will be, our rental charges have been lower than any of the other AIU schools. And so we're, we have a big cushion of to be able to increase our charges. And the next meeting will be tomorrow. Thanks, Jim.
Great, thank you. Shazda, Dr. Vlasky.
So actually, we didn't record this time. April 23rd, myself, Director Honschar, Dr. Crider, and Mrs. Dunker were able to attend the Spring Shazda Conference where two Carleton students were recognized, Dominic Kenke and Regina Schaefer. Charlie Batch was the guest speaker. He spoke about overcoming obstacles, embracing opportunities, and sharing successes. And I had never heard him publicly speak before, so he is much more than.
Yes.
A football player. He is an incredible story. So haven't had a chance, definitely check that out. But it was, it was great to see our students recognized. And he actually committed to this two years ago because we haven't met since before the pandemic. And he said that it was very important to him to come and be there for these students. He actually came home from Florida that morning. So it was that really warm April day that we had. We said he brought sun. But yeah, it was great to be there in person again.
Awesome. Charlie Batch is pretty awesome. Cool. All right, Legislative PSBA, Director Simmsick.
I'm up. Okay, let me see where I want to start here. But I will tell you that, let me start with the foundation because we were gonna meet, but we didn't. It was that day that like the tornado came, Chris, and we didn't venture out of our houses. So hopefully we get to meet soon. Also, we were probably, I sat in on a PSBA meeting where they were introducing COSBA, the Consortium of State School Boards Association. Apparently in September 2021, PSBA like got out of the National School Board Association. So we're not members of that anymore. So COSBA is for those districts in all those states who don't want to be in the NSBA anymore and want to have some sort of, you know, combined resources and legislative representation. So, you know, they talked about that. You know, the reason for, they gave for leaving NSBA was it's very, very political. It's expensive. You know, and they felt like they weren't properly being represented. So one of the things that COSBA is really proud of is their, the way that they're setting up their governance. You know, they said that it costs between $75,000 and $80,000 for someone to become the president of the NSBA. And as far as, yeah, is that crazy? So there's a lot of campaigning that's very political that way. And what they're hoping to do with COSBA is make it nonpart, make sure that it's nonpartisan. And as far as the governance, they're going to have it rotate among the states, you know, member states.
Great.
So they're, you know, they're hoping to make it a little bit more fair that way. So yeah, their services are advocacy, leadership training. Another thing with NSBA is they said the conferences were just too expensive, people couldn't go. And they did say that NSBA membership is declining. It seems like they, right now they have 22 states as members of COSBA, representing 22, what was it? I have a note. 22 million public school students between those states. And each state has two representatives in the group. So I thought that was interesting and you see how that comes together. They're planning lots of events starting in August. I think they're going to have a diversity meeting in August and then they have several more that they're in the planning stages of. So there was that. I also went to Spring Legal Roundup. I participated in that on May 3rd. Topics included there were student speech off-campus, which is in the news a lot these days, and First Amendment free speech impact and public comment at board meetings, the Sunshine Act requirements, charter school renewals, and pupil transportation, right-to-know laws, and FERPA, bad faith, right-to-know requests, and school district mergers and acquisitions were some of the topics covered. So that's, that's all I have.
Some hot books out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. Thank you. Any questions for any of the committee reports? If not, we'll move on. Most reports are done under section four miscellaneous. We have three items. So I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, donation from, donation of school supplies from Hill City, a list of glue notebooks, sharpeners, glue sticks, folders, erasers, crayons, and pencils. Item number two, agreement between Keystone Oak School District and Carleton School District has submitted. I believe that's for Project Succeed. I'm sorry. Yes, Project Succeed for Keystone. Excellent. And then item number three, to approve the language service agreement between Carleton School District and Global Wordsmith effective May 2nd, 2022. I'll motion for those items one through three.
Sound off.
Move to second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under section five finance, we have quite a few items. We have 10 items. We'll go all through, all 10. I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, the bills from May 11th, 2022 through May 13th, 2022 in the amount of $587,449.99. Number two, the following reports as reflected in the May 2022 financial report packet, April 2022 treasures report, investment report, board summary report, athletic fund report, and junior, senior high school activities fund report. Number three, the 2022-2023 proposed final budget in the amount of $34,364,924 with a millage rate of 26.7432. The proposed final budget will be advertised for a period of 30 days prior to the adoption of the final budget and will be available for public inspection. Item number four, the PSBA membership dues for the 2022-23 school year, including policy maintenance, in the amount of $11,130. Number five, to appoint Jude Frank as treasurer for the school board for a term of one year beginning July 1st, 2022. Number six, to approve the Allegheny Intermediate Services Agreement for the 22-23 school year as presented. Number seven, the agreement between the district and Wesley Family Services for school-based mental health services for the 22-23 school year under the terms that are submitted. Number eight, the agreement between the district and Wesley Family Services to provide educational evaluation services effective September 1st, 2022 and beginning through August 31st, 2023. Number nine, the memorandum of understanding between the district and the Allegheny Intermediate Unit for the AIU Title III Consortium for the 22-23 school year as submitted. Lastly, agreement between the district and Jefferson Hospital for Behavioral Health Services that's submitted. I'll motion for those 10 items under section five.
Sound off. Second.
Move consecutive. Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd just like to point out, just because Director Frank is not here, does not mean that. He's just too advanced.
Agreed. Thank you for pointing out. And to confirm, Dr. Crider, I confirmed his, not only willingness, but enthusiasm about serving as treasurer. He does a wonderful job.
But I would point out, this is the second time that he has not been present.
He's a busy man. But he has done a great job. Keith, he's done a nice job working with Jude. So you guys have put us all in a busy position with the help of some other external conditions, but you guys have done a wonderful job, so. Any other questions or comments on those 10 items under section five? Nope. If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. And to confirm that preliminary budget, did or did not include the tax increase?
No in tax.
No, no tax increase as of right now, so.
And just to point out that that was discussed exhaustively at our last meeting last week.
Correct.
People think that we're just flying through the budget. There was a very detailed presentation on the budget last week.
Hour and a half-ish conversation plus, yeah, two hours.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you for pointing that out. Under section six personnel, we have quite a few items to review and approve there. 11, let's just go ahead and try all 11. So number one, I'll entertain a motion to approve, number one, to approve Cynthia Eddy for the position of home guard instructor for a high school student for five hours per week beginning immediately through the end of the 21-22 school year at an hourly rate of $60 per the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. Number two, to approve the following educators for positions as summer schoolteachers at secondary level and consistent with the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. Sessions will be offered based on enrollment, June 22nd through July 8th, except for July 4th, and July 14th through the 29th, 2022, from 7:45 a.m. to 11:45 a.m. Compensation is based on position. Section one, Cindy Eddy, English 11, $3,200 per session. Rebecca Malavich, Math 8, $3,200 per session. Caroline Rapola, Science 7, $3,200 per session. Rebecca Fusen, Science 8, $3,200 per session. William Palatas, Biology, $3,200 per session. Greg Pachansky, Earth Geo, $3,200 per session. Doris Parsons, Geometry, $3,200 per session. Timothy Patzko, American Cultures 2, $3,200 per session. Jacqueline Beadle, School Nurse, $2,400 per session. Session two, Tony Lynn Jackson, English 8, $3,200 per session. William Palatas, Biology, $3,200 per session. Elizabeth Jones, Earth Geo, $3,200 per session. Pamela Stone, Algebra 1, $3,200 per session. Caroline Rapola, Algebra 2, $3,200 per session. Haley Stevenson, $3,200 per session. I'm sorry, I misread. Haley Stevenson, World History 2, $3,200 per session. Greg Pachansky, American Cultures 1, $3,200 per session. Tracy Post, American Gov Econ, $3,200 per session. Michael Reed, ESL, $3,200 per session. And Jacqueline Beadle, School Nurse, $2,400 per session. Okay, number three, the following educators for positions as summer schoolteachers at the elementary level and consistent with the terms of the CFT CBU agreement. Sessions will be offered based on enrollment, June 22nd through July 8th, except for July 4th, and July 14th to 29th, 2022, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Compensation is based on position. Session one, Michelle Zerenda, Field Trip Coordinator, $1,000. Elaine Rikowski, K3, $2,400. Susan Costco, K3, $2,400. Nicholas DeRoz, K3, $2,400. Emily Brzenek, K3, $2,400. Rebecca Breathway, Unified Arts, $200 per day. Session two, Michelle Jrenza, Field Trip Coordinator, $1,000. Kathy Helfrich, 4 to 6, $2,400. Rebecca Breathway, Unified Arts, $200 per day. And Kimberly Fritzius, ESL, $2,400 per session. Item number four, to eliminate the elementary school counselor position at Crafton and Carnegie Elementary within the CFT collective bargaining unit. Number five, to create a special education teaching position at Carnegie Elementary within the CFT collective bargaining unit. Number six, to create an elementary school counselor position at Crafton Elementary within the CFT collective bargaining unit. Number seven, to create an elementary school counselor position at Carnegie Elementary within the CFT collective bargaining unit. Number eight, a realignment, to approve the following realignments and appointments of positions for the 22-23 school year per the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreement. Lisa Price, Elementary Teacher, Grade K at Carnegie. Nicholas Fajanski, Special Education Teacher, Grades K to 2 in Carnegie. Men Hoffman, Elementary Teacher, Grade 2 at Crafton. Rebecca Breathway, School Psychologist, Grade K to 6, Carnegie and Crafton. Alexis Garrison, Elementary Teacher, Grades K in Carnegie. Abby F, Special Education, Autistic Support, Emotional Support, Life Skills Teacher, Grades K to 6. And Elizabeth Herb, Elementary School Guidance Counselor, Crafton. Number nine, to approve Al Lowen as the Carnegie Elementary School Counselor for the 22-23 school year and consistent with the terms of the CFT collective bargaining unit agreements. Number 10, accept the letter of intent to retire submitted by cafeteria worker Mary Rose Grayson effective June 9th, 2022 for the terms of the SCA collective bargaining unit agreement. And lastly, number 11, accept the letter of resignation submitted by general food worker or band driver Ricky Laird effective May 10th, May 20th, I called it, May 20th, 2022. So the motion for those 11 items.
Sound off. Second.
Move to second. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Quick note, we've had a couple of resignations and retirements over the last couple of weeks and I think Dr. Crider has plans to sort of celebrate all of those employee services later in the, in the school year.
In June.
In June. So thank you to everybody for their service, but we'll celebrate that more formally in a month. All right, under section seven, student activities, I don't think we've got anything going on there. Old business for any board members, any old business anybody would like to discuss? How about new business? Anybody want to have new business discussion today? All right, open forum. Anyone in the audience have any open forum questions or comments? Seeing no hands. We'll move to the board. Any last minute open forum questions to the board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sound off.
Move. We have a second?
Thank you.
We have a second? We have a second, thank you very much. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The editor.